Fields, Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salahudin. Council President Kritzler is online, and I am your Presiding Officer, Councilmember Stewart. We have several action items on our agenda today, and we'll start with the planning side of the House. The first item is the Eastside Transportation Partnership Interlocal Agreement. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Sarah Fee Allen.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. As Presiding Officer Stewart said, our next item is to request the approval of the Eastside Transportation Partnership, which is updating our operating agreement. Francesca Liberty, our Senior Transportation Planner with Transportation Planning and Engineering, will provide you with more information.
All right. Hi, everyone. As you may know, the Eastside Transportation Partnership is the forum established for elected officials within the east side of Lake Washington to provide input on decisions and recommendations to King County Metro, Sound Transit, Puget Sound Regional Council, and other regional agencies. As you know, Councilmember Kritzler is our ETP Chair, and Councilmember Salahudin is an ETP member. So the ETP approved an updated operating agreement and procedures, and requires that all participating member agencies, the City of Redmond being one, approve the interlocal agreement prior to adoption by the lead agency or King County Metro. So if not approved, Redmond would lose the opportunity to participate in ETP. And we're requesting approval of this interlocal agreement as part of the consent agenda at the May 20 business meeting.
Thank you so much, Francesca. Before I open it up to council questions, are there any current or alternate members of ETP that would like to speak about this item? Council President Kritzler.
Hello, and apologies not to be there with you in person. But yeah, I can just share that we did spend several ETP meetings reviewing this agreement. I'll also note that this agreement, they made it so that it mirrors the agreements of the other transportation boards in King County. There's a couple other ones for kind of the other groupings of cities. And so we tried to have kind of the same agreements across all of them. And we did make a few changes and had some discussion about it. So I would say Redmond was well represented in terms of kind of the updating of this agreement. And I'd say that it's overall working really well in terms of bringing our jurisdictions together. So I would urge everyone to just do the approval here to support the work that we're doing at ETP. And note that also, you know, as Chair, I have been working to make, find ways to make that space even more productive, especially as light rail arrives to our communities. To be able to say if we're going to have our jurisdictions meet once a month altogether, how do we use that as a space to be able to think collaboratively about how we can solve things like first last mile problems and other types of things? And also just making sure that we, because we have an access to Metro in those meetings, to be able to advocate with them and Sound Transit for our collective priorities. So I think this agreement will support that and hope that the council will join me in approving this agreement.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Are the Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, just a quick question for Council President Kritzler. I served on the ETP some years ago, and something you just said struck me. You're looking, you personally, I believe, is what you said, looking to make it more productive, or more collaborative, or more effective. Do you have a couple of specifics on what changes you think you would like to see?
Yeah, definitely. Oh, sorry. Can I go? Sorry about that.
Go ahead. A quick response, but that is not the subject of the ILA, so we will need to move on after that. Thank you.
Okay, great. I will just note, yeah, when I became Vice Chair, the Chair was Barbara D. Michelle from Ithaca, and the two of us worked on adding into the agendas more opportunities for actually breakouts and discussion amongst jurisdictions to be able to brainstorm on topics. Since I think for a while that group had become very focused on getting updates from agencies, but not necessarily the kind of like joint advocacy and actions together. So we wanted to create more spaces for us to actually be able to talk about what's going on and brainstorm what we could do. And so we're doing more of that. We also are bringing back more in-person connection meetings, which have been very productive, and we've hosted them the last several at the City of Redmond. So I think those will be great. And I do think in the time ahead, we may be forming some subcommittees to look at some different issues, such as federal funding and kind of federal considerations. We're also looking at some issues around the arrival of light rail and first last mile.
Thank you, Council President. And I would just make a note to Council Chair, our Committee Chair. The question was intended to be related to the ILA in the fact that, is there anything missing? Just doing my due diligence. So I would disagree that it's not related.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Is there any objections to this item going to consent on May 20? All right, seeing none, we'll have this back. Thank you so much, Francesca, for your work on this. Item number two on our agenda today is the amendment to the 2023-2024 Go Redmond-King County Metro contract. Introducing this item, we have with us, continuing with us, Sarah Fee Allen, Deputy Director, and Lenaya Taylor. Welcome.
Thank you. Yep, Lenaya Taylor, the city's Program Administrator for our Traffic Demand Management Program. She will be presenting the amendment to the 2023-2024 Go Redmond-King County Metro contract. All the materials were provided in your packet, and I will return it over to Lenaya.
Thank you. As a little refresher, the City of Redmond and King County Metro have been in partnership since 1999. Redmond's Transportation Demand Management Program, we refer to as Go Redmond going forward, that's what helps supplement that. It is divided into four categories that we refer to as employer TDM, residential TDM, equitable TDM, and then TDM pilot programs. Metro would like to go forward with amending the 2023-2024 contract to be extended through December 2025. Then in 2026, the plan would be to start a new two-year contract, which is the regular cadence that we have. And this amendment would allow for us to use the unspent matched funds from 2023-2024. That equates to $138,400. The other change to this contract is updating the terms and conditions that are attached to the memo. This includes WASHDOT as an addition to the reviewing of the funding that we spend, quarterly reporting, and project scopes. So we're requesting approval of this item as part of the consent agenda on the May 20 business meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Okay, thank you so much, Lenaya. Seeing none, are there any objections to this item going to consent on May 20? Seeing none, and at least one thumbs up, we'll have this back. Thank you so much, really appreciate that. I'll also recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Anderson. Welcome. Item number three on our agenda tonight is a memorandum of understanding with Bellwether Housing for acquisition of commercial property. Here to tell us a little bit about it, once again, Deputy Director Allen.
Thank you. Excited to share this progress today. So as Councilmember Stewart said, we are moving forward with an MOU with Bellwether Housing for the acquisition of a commercial property, and requesting that this be on the May 20 consent agenda for adoption. The draft MOU has been included in your packet and will be a precursor to the purchase and sale agreement, which will come before the council for approval in Q3 of 2025. As a reminder, this project is the opportunity for the City of Redmond to purchase a condo space on the ground floor of Prisma, Bellwether's housing, 328-unit affordable housing development that is just a stone's throw away from the Overlake Village Light Rail Station. While this building is not expected to open until 2028, Bellwether Housing is working towards a June application to the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, lovingly known as WishFIC. And WishFIC requires that Bellwether show commitments of financial sources. So we're asking the city council, oh, I was going to also say, the city council has already included acquisition dollars necessary for this purchase in the capital improvement budget, and staff are also actively pursuing grant opportunities to supplement that investment. The staff and programming for the space will be taken up with the city council at a later date as part of our next biennial budgeting cycle, and will be informed by the service needs we've heard through our various strategic and comprehensive planning efforts. I am joined by Park's Deputy Director David Chuchek and David Ambel, our real estate, yeah, the two Davids today, our real estate manager and the finance department, to help answer any questions.
Wonderful. Are you ready for council questions, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'll just remind council and the public that this item was actually one of our big lifts on our legislative agenda, and the city was awarded dollars through the state legislative process to support this project. We'll have a full debrief on the legislative session, I believe, next month. First question is to Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So through reading the MOU, it was mostly clear to me that we would then end up being a, basically a member of the HOA. Is that correct? Do we have any other properties in the city that that's the case?
Not that I'm aware of.
What impacts do you see the city going through? Because that, it's kind of an awkward situation, yes?
Yeah, so we would basically have a, as a partial owner of the building and a member of the HOA, we could be or would be a member of the board that they would establish. They, I don't think they've established the framework of it yet. They've described to us the membership, I think, is of five, a five-member board. There's five key members of that building. And so we would have to have that presence on the board, and we probably would want to have presence on the board, to provide some level of transparency and understanding of what's happening in the building, not just from a financial perspective, but from a future, what, you know, current financial, current operations of the building, but what's happening in the future, what requirements they would need to have in the future for expenditures.
And I'll share that we talked about that with them as well, and actually added that portion to the MOU. It wasn't currently added, but it's something we're going to hash out more as part of the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming legal, our legal team has looked over?
Correct.
Yep.
Our attorney has looked over the MOU and said thumbs up.
Okay. And then, other question is, is this actually taking away an affordable unit for a community member to purchase?
No. It's a commercial space.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Mr. Ambel, I'm so glad that you're here, because my question is one of, just not being quite familiar. Now, I've lived in Redmond for a number of years, and I understand that we don't have any condos coming up, so there's no homeownership possibilities. But yet, we've got a contract in front of us to where the city is being able to purchase a condo. Can you walk me through that for some better understanding?
About the purchase itself, or about?
How is the city able to purchase a condo, but our residents cannot?
Let me explain. It's, one is the difference of the housing versus a commercial space. So the city's not purchasing. So that's.
Right.
So that's, because if, I know many of our residents are going to see, oh, the city's purchasing a condo, because that's the language that we've used. So I just want to walk us through what the difference is, and why is it to where, like, this is a possibility, but over here is not.
At best, I think the best way to describe it is this is a mixed-use development, where the ground floor is going to be commercial space for the most part. I'm not sure exactly how all the different units on the ground floor are going to be used, but they're supposed to be commercial. And then the upper levels are condos and apartments, and I'm not sure how that, how that exactly is going to work out. But I know that our space is zoned for commercial and not residential. And so even though we're using the term condominium, it's because we're buying the space, not the building.
And if I may, I'll hop in to just offer, a bunch of us spend a bunch of time in another building that operates very similarly. So while you may not know it all the time when you're in the building, Together Center is actually part of a condominium association with two separate housing owners, and then the Together Center being the owner of the Human Services Hub condo on the ground floor, which houses a couple dozen providers. So we do have another example of this model in our city.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Sure.
Council President Kritzler.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that condo conversation. Just to be clear, there's nothing that precludes our residents from purchasing condos. It's just that we haven't seen a lot of production of condos. And from what you just said in your previous comments, it sounds like this may include some opportunity for condos within this structure for others to be able to purchase. Is that right?
I don't believe so. I got the feeling from the conversation with Bellwether that they will be the owner of the 300 or some.
Yeah, this is a 320 affordable housing development for 30% to 80% area medium income. Yeah, not a condo development for residential.
So.
But can you clear, yeah, can you clarify, though, that it's not that we wouldn't allow residents to purchase condos, it's just that we don't see developers making very many condos, because, mostly because of state regulations.
Correct.
Yes. I didn't actually put together an analysis of the condo market yet, but I can.
All right, thank you. And for the viewing public, I'll share that in the council packet, if you have more questions on this, in the recitals, in Section A, each paragraph outlines actually the exact number of units and square feet per each of the sections of this, I'll call it multi-use development at the Light Rail Station. And that includes condo spaces for other intercultural programming and whatnot that will be happening with, under a different owner. Councilmember Salahudin.
Yeah, just to sort of wrap up the conversation on condos, the state legislature did pass legislation this year to simplify condo reform liability, or condo liability, so that hopefully we get more units online in our city and across the state.
That is wonderful. We included that in our state legislative agenda, so we were hopeful to see movement there. Are there any other questions about the MOU in front of us, knowing that the purchase and sale agreement for this City Hall annex will come in Q3? Okay, any objections to this item going to consent? Wonderful. We will have this back on May 20. Thank you so much, team. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four on our agenda today is another ILA. It's the approval of the 2026-2035 Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish Watershed Chinook Conservation Interlocal Agreement. We affectionately refer to this as RIAA8. And we'll hear from staff, and then in a moment, since I believe Councilmember Kritzler is the Chair of this committee at this time, we'll ask if she has any additional thoughts to share. Kicking it off is Deputy Director of Public Works, Chris Stenger. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Chris Stenger, Deputy Director of Public Works for Environmental and Utilities. And joining me tonight is Peter Tolt, Senior Environmental Planner. And we're here seeking council's approval to execute the 2026 through 2035 Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish Watershed Interlocal Agreement, or RIAA8 ILA. And this agreement provides structure for the RIAA8 Salmon Recovery Council, and authorizes this particular council to oversee the implementation of the salmon conservation plan. And it also enables the city to contribute funds to support the staff from King County to coordinate the regional implementation of the plan. The Puget Sound Chinook salmon are listed as threatened under the Federal Endangered Species Act, and the RIAA8 conservation plan is federally approved in response to this listing. So participation in this ILA helps the city satisfy its legal requirements. And I will hand it over to Peter for any questions.
Wonderful, and thank you for being here, Peter. I really like your hat. Really appreciate that. Council President Kritzler, did you have any comments you wanted to add before we open it up for questions?
Thank you so much. Yeah, it is my honor to be able to chair this committee. I know you all really love getting my updates during committee reports about all our salmon work. And I hope that we'll continue to do this work, you know, as I often share with people, salmon do not know the boundaries between our cities. They only know whether they are blocked in their migration routes. And so it is important for us to be able to work collaboratively across our jurisdictions to ensure that we have good salmon habitat, and that we can recover our Chinook especially. And I think we have some really great staff at the county. We also have amazing staff in our city, and this body has also supported a lot of projects of the city to be able to work on this. And special thank you to Peter Holt, who has been staffing me on this committee and most of my time on council, and provides amazing insights and thoughts about how we can advance salmon recovery. And I'd just say, this body is always one that is really open to suggestions. This ILA, we did spend quite a few meetings on amongst the recovery council before getting to this language. We did have both Peter look at it, and also Amy Psy from a policy perspective. We give a few edits. You know, Amy's great at giving that fine-tooth comb edit, and all of our suggestions were taken in. So I think from a City of Redmond perspective, we definitely should approve this and continue our great collaborative work in our region.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for your service on RIAA8. Council, do you have questions about the ILA, or any of the materials in the packet? Seeing none, are there any objections to this item going to consent on May 20? All right, we will have that back. Thank you so much, Peter. Chris, appreciate you. All right, item number five on our agenda today is to approve the consultant agreement with David Evans and Associates Incorporated for the pavement management project on 148th Avenue Northeast from Redmond Way to Northeast 85th Street. This is the design phase. And with us today is, I'm so sorry, I'm having an afternoon.
No worries. Steve Gibbs, Capital Division, Public Works.
Last time I misidentified you as the wrong Steve, and I do apologize, Mr. Gibbs.
He's a much nicer person. So thank you, council. This item is continuing our overlay efforts on the Redmond Streets. This is 154th from approximately Leary Way to 90th. This is a consultant agreement with David Evans and Associates for roughly $300,000. This is also a project that has a federal grant, so we're getting started a little bit early so that we can do the federal march and make the obligation deadline in June of '26. And be happy to take any, we're shooting for consent on May 20. Any questions on that?
Wonderful. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, are there any objections to this item going to consent on May 20? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Appreciate that. And you're sticking with us for item number six, that's correct?
I'm going to, I'm going to make this chair nice and warm here.
Okay, so let me introduce it for you. Item number six is award construction contract to Active Construction Incorporated for the Hardscape Project Reservoir Park Sport Court Replacement and Tank Repairs. Take it away, Mr. Gibbs.
Yeah, so this is a construction contract for Active, 1.4 million. We're looking to get on consent for May 20 and get started in the nice, warm construction season this summer. The bids did come in a bit high over our estimate. I think we underestimated a couple items, and then there's, I think there was a couple items that had a little more risk, and the contractor bid it a little higher than we anticipated. We still have enough budget to accommodate it. This contractor's done several projects for the city, so it's a good, reputable contractor, and we recommend moving forward with the project. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Councilmember Fields.
How many bids did you get?
We received two bids. One bidder withdrew due to an error in their bid.
So, in a sense, one.
We received one responsible, a responsive bid.
I guess there's not a whole lot you can do about that, other than go back out for bidding.
So generally, what I've experienced over my many years is that if we go out and rebid, these two contractors will not bid the job. And really, you would need to change something in the scope of the contract to really encourage other bidders to take a look at it.
And when you say you might have missed some scope, can you, and that drove the price up, can you provide some?
So, well, we underestimated the mobilization, and that accounted for some of the delta. And then, the, I did bring a sample. This is the new court surfacing, if you want to pass that around. This is kind of a unique install, because it's on top of a water tank, and so it's 50 years old. And so a lot of the cracking from underneath have reflected up through, and that's part of the problem that the players are experiencing. And so with this new system, we kind of eliminate that. It's kind of like a floating system on top of the tank. But it is new for this area. It's tried and true, Back East. Park's maintenance crews did a lot of research checking on this system. We've got nothing but positive feedback. We really think it is the right solution for this situation.
Great. Yeah, and I know that, personal experience, a nonprofit tennis club that I belong to, we have four courts that we are looking at similar.
Well, feel the sample, and I think you'll be all for it.
I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields and Mr. Gibbs. Are there other questions from the council on this item? Are there any objections to this item going to consent? After having had an opportunity to engage with the sample, Mr. Fields, you good? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. We will have this back on the 20th. We appreciate it. Okay, item number seven is an issue that's coming back to us today. This is award job order contract to Forma Construction Company of Seattle, Washington. Joining Mr. Gibbs at the table is Eric Dawson. Welcome. Take it away.
So yeah, this is a continuation of the discussion we started a couple of weeks ago. You had some questions at the presentation, and we've put in a kind of a question and answer matrix in today's memo that attempts to address those questions. So I'm, we're here to discuss those any further, if you'd like, or if there are other questions that come up, we can certainly attack those, too.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dawson. And for the viewing public, the three questions asked in the matrix from the council's prior touches were about the types of projects that the contract would include, any disadvantages of this model, and how the minority-owned business enterprise and women-owned business enterprise goals were determined. Council, do you have any questions, or what questions do you have for Mr. Dawson?
Okay, hearing none, I'll just add my comments. Thank you for the report back on this. This is a two-year contract with an optional one-year extension, so we hope that it will achieve all of the goals that you had in terms of efficiency. And we, I personally appreciate the limitations that were established, so some of those larger items, especially in our CIP, can continue to come back to the council, and we can monitor it and see how it's going in the, you know, next two years, and see if this is working. So I hope it is successful for you all. With that, Council President Forsyth.
Will we get a one-year check-in to see how it's going, and any updates, that we can just kind of know the progress, and how many projects we didn't necessarily see that we normally would have?
We'd be happy to do that. Maybe we do that in one of our quarterly updates.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the council? Are there any objections to this item going to consent? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dawson and Mr. Gibbs. We'll have this back on May 20. Really appreciate that. Appreciate your work. Item number eight on the agenda is to approve the final contract with Dalton Electric Corp and accept construction for the award of bid to Dalton Electric Corp in the amount of $1,197,328 for the pump VFD replacement project. Take it away.
Yeah, this is a project long time coming, and Eric managed it, and I'll let Eric take it away.
So this project replaced variable frequency drives at five of our pump stations, both sanitary and domestic drinking water. The VFDs, they power the pumps in a much more efficient way. They let the pumps operate both more efficiently and longer term. They'll last longer. These VFDs were in need of replacement. Our staff had actually turned to eBay to source parts on the old VFDs, so this was sorely needed upgrade. So the pumps have been in, they've been running for a couple of years now. been in, they've been running for a couple of years now. They've been running flawlessly after some initial hiccups. They've been running flawlessly now, so we're pretty confident that these are the right thing, and they're working well.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Really exciting. Are there any questions from the council? It is exciting. There's chuckles in the room, but it is really exciting. We want to, we want to wrap it up. Mr. Fields, take it away.
Is this part of the proverbial keep the toilets flushing concept as far as water pressure and that kind of thing?
Yeah, for sure. It's, yeah, it is in that same vein.
Okay. I mean, that is a political humor. Been around for a while, but.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Keep everybody happy.
Yep.
Excuse me, any further questions, any objections to this item going to consent on May 20th? Okay, welcome. We will have that back. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're now going to transition to two topics for the council to provide feedback for upcoming study sessions. Both of the study sessions, excuse me, are scheduled for May 27th. The first is a Public Works study session regarding Asset Performance Management 101. And introducing this, I have Brandon Bueller, is that correct? Hi, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, councilmembers. Brandon Bueller, Asset Performance Manager, Public Works Department. I'd like to solicit your feedback and questions on the item in your packet regarding a study session on May 27th to give an overview of the comprehensive asset management program that we are implementing in the Public Works Department, why it's important, its benefits, and our status and glide path to implement that program. I'd like to take your questions at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. What questions does the council have for the study session? All right, I'll go ahead and kick us off. Thank you for including the materials as well as the slides that we'll see at the study session. It was very clear to me that as the performance management moves forward, it will largely be the thing that makes the day-to-day of staff, makes everyone's lives better. We have a lot of high performers here in the City of Redmond, and having this all organized is going to help everyone get done what they're trying to get done in the day, and is really how I understood the project. So it's super helpful as a council to be aware of that. It helps us be better storytellers of what's going on in the city where we're out there and able to say with confidence that our staff are making the best resources of the residents' tax dollars. So I do really appreciate that. As I read it, I know it's not directly related, so this may be a bit of a stretch, but I wanted to know, what are the business conflicts that could be uncovered through this process that we should address through the MOC redevelopment process and make sure that we're investing in, in that process? So I'd be curious to hear your thoughts.
I don't have a response to that off the cuff. I can.
On the 27th is great. Yeah, we'll collect the questions for you today.
Into more of that, yes.
Okay, okay.
What I would add is that, like, at its heart, asset management, it's not software, okay? It's a business process. It's a cultural shift. And we really want to identify what assets we own, what condition they're in, what do we need them to do. That speaks to levels of service and how we manage them responsibly within the budget. And I would say it's that third component of what do we need them to do at a prescribed level of service and being very strategic aligned on what that is, so that we're not under or overinvesting in these, in these system assets long-term. It's billions of dollars of assets.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll gather the questions for you today, and then we'll get to have that conversation on the 27th.
Terrific.
I saw Council Vice President Forsyth, and then Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. So for the upcoming conversation, I'd love to hear a little more about, we always have the McKinstry Report, which is our facilities assessment, big old report that we get done maybe every six years or so. I'd love to hear how that will dovetail with this work, and just kind of a bit more about what the full scope of this work entails. Like, you started to tell us a little bit, which, and then I was like, oh, okay, this makes a little more sense. So just hearing a bit more about how those dovetail, what benefits you see and what downfalls you potentially see as well.
Got it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, two things I'd like to see a bit more on. When I think in terms of asset management or asset performance management, and I'm not going to get too philosophical here, but I often make the statement that, you know, infrastructure is for people, systems are for people. It's not the other way around. It's not that people are there not to nurture the system. The system is supposed to produce results to improve people's lives, make lives more happier, more efficient, maybe cheaper. So when, when we think in terms of outcomes, will you be able to go to that level, that out level of outcomes, to say, these assets serve these, these residents, these people, and this is what they provide, and this is, you know, these, this is the performance in this that we're looking for? Is that part of this plan?
Hundred percent.
That is a really good thing. And then the second thing I would add is, when I also think in terms of outcomes, I think in terms of risk management and risks of not achieving those outcomes. So if you could provide some information on your risk management plan, that would be amazing.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bueller, thank you very much for being here. I'm actually quite excited to see what comes from this. When we think about scaling and risk management, oftentimes it's taking a look and managing what it is that we know that we have. I'd love to hear more about how we're going to identify through the risk management what holes there may be, what may be missing. So not only how are we managing what we have, but what, if we had, would make a profound difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This side of the table, any questions for the study session? Okay, hearing none. We look forward to the conversation on the 27th. Thank you so much, Brandon.
Likewise. Thank you.
Yeah. Our next preview for our study session is back with the Planning and Community Development Team. This is a Transportation Master Plan status update. And again, we'll be having a study session on May 27th. Welcome, team. Sir, excuse me, Deputy Director Allen and Michael, welcome back.
Thank you. As part of our commitment to keep council updated on the Transportation Master Plan, we are bringing up two more chapters to discuss with the council. So first, the street plan and the transit chapters. Here with me today is Michael, our transportation planning manager, to share a little bit more.
Thank you, Deputy Director Serfi. Ellen, and thank you, councilmembers. Yeah, so just as a reminder, the Transportation Master Plan is the functional strategic plan that guides transportation investment and activities to support Redmond 2050, the comprehensive plan. So at the May 27th study session, we would love to review the street plan and transit chapters with you. These chapters were included in your agenda materials. The street plan chapter will focus on implementing an integrated multimodal transportation network that effectively serves all travel modes while minimizing conflicts between road users to achieve the city's safety goals. And the transit chapter will really be first of its kind for the City of Redmond. It will establish Redmond's desired future transit network and building on the light rail, of course, and focusing on those first-last-mile strategies. And so, yeah, eager to hear any, any questions or specific items that you would like us to discuss on the 27th of May.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Council, what questions do you have on the street plan and transit chapters? Councilmember Fields.
Two things I'd like to know a bit more about, local shuttles, local transportation, where are we at? What are we making progress? Are we, are we looking for a time horizon when those kinds of things are available? So I'd like to see more of that. The other's a little bit more self-ish. When I went to Kirkland this morning, I noticed they have a lot of motorcycle parking stalls, and I don't think there's any in Redmond. And I really see that as a potential benefit, not just to motorcyclists, but to cars, because we are shrinking our parking all the time in all of our cities. And the more we can make available, more make efficient use of that space, the better. So a few motorcycle parking spaces would be cool.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Okay, I have one similarly related to Mr. Fields. We do know that the legislature did grant the City of Redmond dollars for our mobility program, and I'm sure we'll hear about that later. But for the Transportation Master Plan in this transit chapter, I was struck about the amount of language that was there for the Metro Flex program. And I do think it's worth us taking a few minutes to talk about that on our study session, just because Light Rail is opening to downtown on Saturday, and the neighbors who we are going to hear from the most about their interest in getting themselves to Light Rail in an easier way are the neighbors whose neighborhoods are shaded on that map. Education Hill folks, we see you. Folks who live down by the lake, we see you. And to, for us to all have a reminder that we are building in a plan for them that meets that need. So I think that that's worth spending a little bit of time on at our study session. And then on the street plan, I actually, I would like to hear a little bit more about the roundabout first strategy and where that is a, what's an example of a great condition for that, and what's an example of not, just for my own education and better understanding. Thank you. Council President Kritzler.
Thank you. Well, I did raise my hand to comment on the Metro Flex piece. I will just plus one on that and note that I think it would be interesting to be able to hear about what the process might be and what the options would be for us to be able to achieve the vision that is laid out in the TMP on that. I, and I guess one question in terms of how this plan enables that, I know that a while back when we had asked about the options to be able to build out with Metro on Metro Flex, we were told that we needed to have a transit plan in order for them to even consider that. So anyway, if you can just share a little bit more about the details on that, and kind of, even though obviously this is the plan and not the implementation, it would be good to know a little bit more about what the potential path forward would be to achieving that vision. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Other questions for the study session? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Just interested in a little bit more about the neighborhood hub and the regional hub aspect, more on the neighborhood side, if that's the, where we'll be seeing the zones for the gig economy, Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, that kind of thing. Just a little, just a smidgen more about that.
On the mobility hubs?
Yeah.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I'm super excited for the conversation. One of the things that was important to me as we continued to go through these chapters was to see how Redmond 2050 was going to be implemented in these plans, and it's so obvious through these plans. So it's just really fun to see all of the input from community making it into these drafts. They're super strong. So look forward to the conversation on the 27th.
Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out, actually, as well, that they've been doing a lot of community engagement similar to Redmond 2050, and it's coming through very clearly as well.
Okay, awesome. Well, we could, we would love to hear a little bit of, actually, if you're doing a fresh round of engagement, I would, I would love to.
Outside of Redmond 2050?
If you're doing new engagement related to this chapter, if you have any new engagement to share with us.
That is, that is planned for our July update.
Perfect.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Give you an overview of what we've been hearing.
Awesome. Thank you. Very much appreciate your time. That is the last item on our agenda for the good of the order, and I apologize. I did not get to this at the top of the meeting. Don't forget, folks, we are celebrating Public Works Week this month, May 18 through the 24th. Thank a crew member if you see him out there. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a great evening.